Good evening. I'd like to open the August 13, 2008 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that all members are present. This time entertain a motion for acceptance of the minutes from the July 9, 2008 Planning Commission meeting.
There's been an amendment, I believe, to those minutes.
And I think it was a minor.
Yes, it was a minor, so motion to approve the amended minutes.
Thank you. Motion by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Don Grant. Any opposition?
I abstain, I was not present.
Okay, one abstention. Okay. Julio abstains. Okay, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the July 9 Planning and zoning Commission meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Paige Becknell. Any opposition?
Same abstention.
Okay, abstention by Julio Dumas. Motion carries. This time open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone in the audience wishing to talk on any item that is not on the agenda, please come forward and you'll have three minutes to talk. Also at this time, I'd like to mention that on the zoning commission meeting, we do have an item that has been pulled, so we'll have zoning commission after the planning commission meeting. And the item pulled is the Kirk, Maxwell, and Larry Moran item, and then also the Henry Bro property for Jim Jenkins. Just in case anybody's here for that. Okay, anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none. Okay, I'd like to open up for public hearing for granting approval to the following family partitions. The Gary J. Babin property, lots B1D5A, B1D5B, and Quintmont surveyors.
Good evening. Clint Quintmont representing WJ Quintmont surveyors, asking for planning commission approval on the Gary J. Babin family partition. We did have some comments. First comment was, since the remaining 7.6 plus or minus acres of lot B1D5A has 82.81 lot width and frontage, and the required frontage is 100 feet in Conservation zoning district, either combine this remaining acreage with Mr. Babin.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit better? It's hard to hear you.
It says, "Either combine this remaining acreage with Mr. Babin adjoining lot B1A or make lot B1D5B narrow and deeper." Actually, we did have 100-foot on the previous plat, but in addition to comment three, which is the subdivision order requires 40-foot access servitude, the applicant could request a variance allowing him to provide a 30-foot private access servitude in lieu of the required 40-foot. So there was an existing 20-foot servitude that was created back on reference map number one, back in February 14, 1973. We increased that 10 feet on the Gary J. Babin property to create a 30-foot private servitude of passage below lot B1D5B. You can see the total of 112.81 private servitude of passage, and that's the 82.81 plus the 30 feet that turns to the west. So we've met those two comments, but we're still asking for the variance for the 30 feet. Comment number two, in which directions are both lots draining? Is there a need for a drainage servitude along one side of each lot connecting to the rear lot servitudes with the Gary Babin extension? This entire property drains to the south. It has, Harry J. Smith property, it's a natural low area, and so we put a note on there right below Harry J. Smith's address. The entire property drains and it's only a direction to a lower elevation, and we determined that there wasn't a need for any additional drainage servitudes, me and the review agency. As far as addressing the comments, that was it.
Thank you. Commissioners have any questions or comments?
I have a question. In your additional 10-foot servitude that you added right-of-way, there is a utility pole.
Yeah, there's even a utility pole at the end of Gary Babin Road, 40-foot right-of-way. My client has been talking with the parish about extending that road all the way to the end, so they're still in discussion with them by doing that, extending that public road, because that was the original intention. Somehow when the parish created the public right-of-way of Gary Babin Road, they didn't follow the original 20-foot servitude of passage that was created back in 1973. And as you can see, it slants off from going north to south, from east to west direction, falling into the original 20-foot servitude of passage. So I don't know what to do about a utility power pole. I imagine if they extend the public road like they plan to do, I imagine they will reroute the utility power poles.
Any other comments this time?
Clint, I don't understand how your geometry's going to work with the street. How are you going to connect to it on a 30-foot? Because when you end it at the north end of B1D5B, you'll have a short piece there that's only 20 feet. See what I'm saying?
Maybe I can show you the 1973 map. There's the original servitude, 20-foot servitude of passage, extending all the way down to the end of the lot, 10-foot along the east side of the property line. That right-of-way merges into that original servitude of passage. And then we added an additional 10 feet on no longer B1, but on the B1 side on this map to get a 30-foot servitude of passage. They already have a servitude passage in existence that they can use, been using at any time. It's been there since 1973.
I mean, you see what he's saying as far as that little connection from Gary Babin Road to your site? It just does not connectivity, and it kind of goes in conjunction with that power pole sitting right there. How does that all come together right there at that corner? I mean, that's the critical point of everything is that corner. I mean, one's pretty far to the east of the other, and how does it all connect?
The 40-foot right-of-way merges into the 20-foot. Mr. Gary Babin, who is giving the property to Justin McCoy, has driveway along his southern boundary. At any given point, they can come off that driveway and extend straight down through the servitude of passage.
The driveway can only serve one residence, correct?
They can put a driveway anywhere they want. They have a servitude of passage that exists, and they could put one in 20-foot, all the way to where it was originally done. And they have that right, all the way to V1C if they want to. It's in existence. So they have rights to that servitude to put a driveway there if they want to. They have rights to that. So as long as the driveway was within the 20-foot or then the 30-foot on the new track, I don't understand what the problem is. I mean, they can come down to 20-foot and bypass the public road altogether if they want to.
Yeah, but that's not improved.
Yeah. What's that?
But that's not improved. Gary Babin Road is improved. So, you know, coming down an unimproved strip of land 20 feet wide doesn't do you a bit of good if you can't drive down it.
No, but they can do that at any given time that they feel is necessary because they have servitude rights of passage within that 20-foot at any given time, starting at any given place within that servitude. And since the public road merges within that 20-foot, long as it's within the servitude and it reaches the public road, they can put it right away.
I just don't see that as a desirable situation. You got just a little, and I don't even know if you have that full 20 feet right there because that power pole's sitting there. I mean, it's more of an angular connection because it's not on the same side of both the property line.
I agree that the public road was not put where it should have been when the parish created and put the road in. I agree wholeheartedly. They put it in the wrong place. That's a fact, but the servitude of passage merges in to the public road in front of B1A. They already have rights to the servitude of passage that was existed in 1973 of the 20-foot. They can put the driveway right over the two pipes that are sitting right there, as long as it connects with the public road.
Of course, I don't see the two pipes on your layout here. That would be nice to have.
Yeah, they're right there. I'm going to look at them. See them right there? Also in the detail.
The two pins?
Monuments.
Monuments, yeah.
Oh, not a culvert?
No.
Okay, I see. Yeah, I got it.
When you say the parish didn't build the road in the wrong place, you mean they built it on somebody else's property other than their right-of-way?
The intention was for the parish to come down within the 20-foot servitude of passage and create the road there, thus giving both adjoining properties on each side of that dividing line rights to the public road. And when they did, they did not. They put it too far east, out of the servitude of passage.
Okay, any other questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, what I see is on B1A, there isn't any showing of any passage of servitude or anything else. How do you get over to it?
You have to go to the map again so I can point it out. Okay, here's the 20-foot servitude of passage, and here is where the 40-foot right-of-way merges into that 20-foot existing servitude of passage, right here.
No, Clint, I think what he's saying is he said on lot B1A, there's no label showing that as a 20-foot servitude of passage. In fact, it says end of right-of-way. So we're trying to connect the two together. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. John was drawing a good illustration there. Where that right-of-way merges into that 20-foot right there, and runs to the end of the asphalt right there. This entire piece is the servitude and the public right-of-way joining.
I think that what's got us a little confused is if you look along the frontage of lot B1A, that strip of land simply says end of right-of-way, doesn't say, I guess we weren't seeing it as a continuation of the 20-foot servitude of passage. You see what I'm saying? Lot B1A, go up, right there. See that?
Yeah.
You need to identify that if it is. I mean, it is at the lower part of your sheet, but not, yeah, right.
This is the existing 20-foot servitude of passage. The right-of-way actually ends at the end of the asphalt, right there. That's actually the end of the right-of-way, where the public maintenance ends. Of course, as you know, you can't, parish can't maintain private property. So that's where the asphalt ends, so then the right-of-way ends right there, 40-foot
Okay, any other questions or comments this time?
One last, I'm sorry, one last question. If I'm looking at the little vicinity map, it looks to me like Gary Babin Road, it's a fairly long piece, pretty long road, from where it intersects with Burnt Cane Road, more or less. How far is that?
I don't give you that specific number. I don't know if I have the road list with me.
Just approximately, is it a quarter mile, half a mile?
I'd say quarter of a mile, I should write.
And the only thing to turn around on that curvy road is someone's driveway. There's really no turnaround at the end or anything like that.
That's because the parish didn't create a turnaround of any type. They just dead-ended it.
Right.
Whereas is shown there.
I'm just wondering, given that you have this L-shaped lot, if you couldn't make that D-turnaround a little bit bigger so that you can accommodate some kind of a turnaround at the end of that servitude of passage?
But that's private, so the public can't use that. That's the reason we're here, because it's private. If it was public, they'd just do a simple partition, so the public can't go down there and turn around.
So unless Mr. Babin invites me, I can't drive beyond the end of Gary Babin Road?
That is absolutely correct. He can put himself up there, gate, and block everybody out because it's private.
Well, you happened to mention something about some talks with the parish of extending Gary Babin Road.
My client, not me personally, but my client, in discussions with my client, has expressed to me they are in talks with doing that, yes. And actually, there seemed to be some type of road construction that had gone on, where they had taken some asphalt up. According to him, to date, they have never came back. So I don't know the correct status of that extension or how that's going.
Because I mean, if they're looking at extending, or if there's a possibility of extending this road, and I'm going to say to the end of the property, I don't know, but we go ahead and we allow this private servitude of passage, and it doesn't figure in with the engineering as far as extending the existing road, what kind of problems might that create? If any?
Well, I advise my client, if they are going to extend the road, to ensure that when they do, when they give the right-of-way to the parish, or permission, or whatever legal form that may be, that continue to go in a westward direction down to the end of the property line, therefore giving them adequate public road frontage. That was my suggestion to my client, if they were going to go ahead and extend it to keep going west as it slanted, to ensure that they would have public road frontage if they were going to give up the right-of-way to the parish to do so. Like I said, that's not how it is today, here what we got, as private as it is today.
I have not seen this configuration on the east side of lot B1D5A, where you add the east side plus part of the south side together to get your footage. I have not seen that before. Charles, you want to? I still don't see how you can add that together and get the frontage.
Typically, on subdivisions where you have a lot at the end of a turnaround, the frontage of the lot will be figured going around the turnaround.
But it's not a turnaround, it's a private servitude. And he just said that.
Well, it's a private servitude, but it's a turnaround at the end of the private servitude, servitude of passage. So physically, it's the same thing as though it were a public right-of-way. As far as, you know, this is concerned.
And I have several plats approved throughout this year that where you have multiple lots and the right-of-way ends at the property line of the last lot, not even extending. I have several plats like that approved by this permission already previously this year. So this added part was only done because the existing 20-foot went to the end of the property.
I'm going to have to disagree with you because I don't remember seeing it in the last two years I've been on the commission.
Where a private servitude ends at the last lot?
No, that wraps around like that, where the figures are added together to achieve the frontage. I just don't remember ever seeing that before.
My point is that actually, on several plats, the servitude of passage ends right here, because that's all they require for access, right here.
That's right.
I just did this turnaround because the existing 20 was there, all the way to the end. So I've seen several plats approved where the servitude of passage, private, ends at the last lot, without any 100-foot of, 90-foot of, 100-foot of, any part of frontage.
Any other questions or comments at this time?
Well, Clint, let me ask you another question. To the south is Harry J. Smith. Does he have benefit of that servitude of passage? You're going right to his property line.
That's really a legal question. It's not a surveyor's question. I don't know. I just know where the servitude extends to.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment on this family partition, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak, and please state your name.
Hi, I am Councilman Todd Lambert, represent District Nine for Mr. Gary Babin. I'm in favor of this family partition. To me, this is a true family partition. It's a grandfather wanting to give his grandson a piece of property. And, you know, I see some family partitions that come in with some loopholes that really, you know, give us some hardship as a council because they develop some property. But this guy's just giving one acre to his grandson developed, and I feel it's a true family partition. A couple of things that, talking to Mr. Gary, Mr. Gary's driveway was asphalted by the parish because there's a bus turnaround in Mr. Gary's driveway right before where this property comes in at. So there is a turnaround that the parish paves, so apparently it is parish turnaround. And I've been there, I don't know if all of y'all went and looked at the property. It's a unique piece of property. It's on the end of a road. Past that road, there's a lot of wetlands. It's real quiet, but when the river comes up, they got some backwater. And these people are familiar with that backwater, but have accepted it for years. But it's real, I don't see any more development happening further than that because it's nothing but swamp. It's very wet past that. And I'm definitely in favor of it, and I wish the commission would approve this family partition because I really believe it's a true family partition. When, you know, a grandfather wants to give his grandson a piece of property, I see no reason not to allow it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else?
Back when they blacktopped that road, they didn't blacktop it, they chopped it up, cemented it, and they put oil on it. They went all the way to my garage where my wife parks her school bus. So they did maintain my driveway. So that's actually maintained by the parish. Now, all of a sudden, you know, everybody denies that. But if you need witnesses, I can bring them in. They maintained that up to my garage. The parish maintained that road. So I got a road right there maintained. I got a road all the way, when they blacktopped the road, they didn't need to go all the way to the woods because nobody was back there. So they stopped it at our two driveways. Now they say again, well, we didn't accept the road. You mean to tell me you accept only the part that you blacktopped? You didn't accept the rest of it? I mean, how you do that? They got people lived back there for seven years on the end of that road. That's why the telephone pole's sitting there. And here, I'm trying to give my grandson, in the United States of America, acre land, and I've got to go through all this bull? That's bull crap.
Public hearing's closed. Commissioners have any other comments, questions?
You understand what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that this configuration ultimately ends up safe and functional for the parish, you know, and that's all we were driving there.
I realize that.
You realize that. Got a question for you. You're right, in many of these family partitions, the servitude of passage actually ends at the end of the road. I'm assuming you're extending it, obviously, to achieve that frontage number. You know, is there a problem? I mean, I know you've got to turn around back there for the buses. You know, do you have a problem if that servitude of passage isn't, doesn't have a private restriction on it in case Mr. Smith to the south wants to, needs it, or wants to use it in the future?
You're going to have to ask that question one more time.
Earlier, you said that the servitude of passage is going to be private.
Private servitude of passage? He's not dedicated in the right-of-way, so I don't think, I think that's not an appropriate matter for the parish to be involved in.
Okay, well, in that case, all right, I'll move for approval.
Have a motion by Julio Dumas for approval. Motion is not permissible. Comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Well, I got a question, and I don't know if it's, we don't see where the other servitude of passage, 20 feet, is marked on this map. That's number one. Number two, if that driveway comes in and it's being used by the buses to turn around, then, and the gentleman could give that into a servitude or give it into something that it could be done, but right here on this drawing, I don't see how we can do it.
I think the 20-foot passage is there, he just didn't label it up on that lot B1A.
I'd be happy to leave it, label it up there.
It does continue all the way, I know that, but...
Yeah, it's labeled actually on the east side. I'll have to show you again.
It's just not concentric as it comes.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I could cut...
Well, you know, I think once he explained it, I could see how, how he sees it, but, you know, it's...
Here it is, here, labeled here.
Because the lines do continue through.
Also label it up here to show it on B1A. It's, it's existing, I'd be happy to do that.
But the telephone pole is in the servitude of passage, right?
Actually, if I'm looking at the map correctly, and if I'm wrong, that servitude, that power pole is at the end of the existing asphalt road, but it's really technically outside the servitude of passage. Is that correct?
That is, that particular power pole, that is correct.
No.
No.
No, it's not. Look at it carefully. This line continues on north, the pole's outside the pole. This line then turns this way. It's in the corner of the two.
Yeah, you see? Right there, you can touch.
Assuming your maps are scale, of course.
Of course it is.
Any other comments, questions? If not, what is the wish of the commission?
What's the, what's the size of a T turnaround? It would be 30 by 30 in this case?
A T turnaround?
Well, it'd be 30 feet, then 30 feet on either side.
It's, um, 40 by, or 50 by 110.
110 feet long?
Mm-hmm.
Clint, right now, that L shape that you have there is essentially 42 feet. From the property line going west is 42 feet, right?
Right.
If I'm counting right, the, you've got the 30-foot, excuse me, you got 20 and 12. So you got 32 feet.
At the turnaround, at the very end?
Yes, sir.
I have the, I have the 10 on the east side of the property line, which was existing, and then have 30 feet from the property line. So actually, that's 40 feet of turnaround servitude.
So 40 feet overall?
Yes, we're at L shapes, it's 30 feet from the property line by 30 feet from the property line. But there's another 10 feet on the east side of the property line that's existing.
Assuming your property line is the center line of the road, the center line of the T turnaround would be 55 feet on either side. Would you have an objection to making that a little deeper to make it look like a 55, like the half of a, of a T turnaround?
I mean, you can, it's private, though.
I, I'm not disputing that.
I mean, the grandson can go over there if he wants to and turn around, or Mr. Gary Babbin, who already owns B1A, could go drive down there and turn around and head back out.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to fish for, for a second's motion here.
I know, I appreciate it. I should have got a second anyway.
I'm going to make a motion to deny. I don't believe this plat, I understand Mr. Babbin wants to give this to his grandson. I understand the intent meets the requirements, but I don't believe this plat meets the requirements of the ordinance.
Can you tell me what part of the ordinance?
I don't believe it meets the requirements.
So we can't say what part of the ordinance it doesn't meet?
All right, Clint, let's do work. Okay, I have a motion to deny by Sherri Schlyman. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Beverly Barre. All in favor? All in favor of the motion? I'm going to count one.
Roll call. I'll ask for roll call.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's, I'm just jumping ahead here. Okay, got Sherri. Well, yeah, I got my, yay Sherri, Beverly. Who else? For Paige? Okay, anyone else in favor? Okay, all opposition? Julio nay, Don nay. Michael? No. And Steve?
No.
Okay, motion does not carry.
I'm going to, I'm going to try again for motion of approval. Clint, subject to you...
Wait, time out. Now... Wait, yes, hang on, Julio.
4-3?
4-3, you're right.
Okay, doesn't the chairman need to vote?
No, that's a tie. No, it's a tie.
Only when it break a tie.
I'm going to make a motion to approve with the condition that you provide for a 30 by 55-foot turnaround at the end of the, of the George Babbin private servitude, 30-foot, the 50-foot being measured from the property line. I'd also ask that you add the label to the, in existing lot B1A of the private servitude portion there for 20 feet so that it's clear.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas to provide, I missed the first part of your motion, but basically to provide clear access with 40 feet of, is that what it was?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, and to have that, to, to make a 30 by 55-foot turnaround with the 55-foot commencing on the, on the east property line and, and then relabel the, the existing 20-foot servitude of passage on the, on lot, lot B1A so that it's clear that it's there.
Aye, secretary.
Okay, a motion by Julio Dumas for approval with conditions, seconded by Don Grant.
I object, opposed.
Okay. We have three nays. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got Don, yay. Michael?
We ain't start to stop, what?
No, I'm just looking at something else right now.
Okay, let's see, Steve, you, yay.
Oh, yes.
Julio?
Three.
Yay, obviously.
Three, three, Marsha.
Yep. I don't know how long you have. How long's he having?
Never is. Up to you, you the chairman.
Oh, I'll give him a couple, couple more seconds. He's thinking hard. Okay, yay. So motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, public hearing for family partition, the Leland Keller property, lots A, B, and C. Mr. Vazell?
Tough act to follow. Good evening, commission members. I'm representing the Leland Keller property. Leland cannot be here tonight. We have, excuse me, we have addressed the parish staff comments, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and we're asking for approval of this family partition this evening.
All right, thank you. Commissioners have comments, questions? If there are no comments, questions by the commissioners at this time, I'd like to open up floor for public hearing. Anyone to wish, wishing to comment on this family partition, please come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to comment? Comments, questions by commissioners?
I just have a question, staff. What happens to the side setback to the Leland Keller residence with the 20-foot servitude of passage there? Does that just become a violent nonconformity? Or is that, is that meat setback?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
The side setback for the residents, the Leland Keller residents in lot A, measured from the servitude of access. Does that still meet those...
We have no setback on a private servitude of access.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions by commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Julio Dumas for approval, seconded by, I'm...
Sherri.
All right, Sherri Schlyman. Any opposition? Motion carries. I'd like to open up the floor for public, I mean, for a public hearing for the family partition of Colin Porter property, lots A, B1, A, B2. Mr. Vazell again?
Yes. This is a family partition that was approved almost exactly as you see it back in 2005, and the lot, lots were not put in any family members' names within the time period allotted, so it's being brought again before the 2008 commission. And we have addressed staff comments, and I'll be happy to answer questions this evening on this family partition, and we ask for your approval.
Comments, questions by commissioners?
Any changes at all to the previously approved configuration?
The changes are, the flood zone designations are different, but the lot sizes and lot areas have not changed at all. So it's exactly the way it was approved in 2005 relative to the lot configurations and the lot acreage. And the servitudes have not changed either.
Now, there's not a residence on the front lot, correct?
That's correct.
So with only a 20-foot private access servitude, a new residence would have to have its own driveway, right?
As I understand it, the 20-foot private access servitude is allowable when it accesses only one residence in the back lot.
Right.
Yes.
Right, so if they build on the front, then they have to use a different dri, they have to build another driveway?
Uh, I cannot confirm that. I don't, I've never seen that. For instance, the one we just approved, I believe...
There were three different driveways on that one.
Well, I'm, I'm just, this was, is the one that's most recently on my mind, but yes, there is, okay. I've, I've, I've never seen that invoked.
Well, let me just ask Charles, that's correct, and a new residence would have to have a new driveway, right?
Well, not exactly a driveway. It's the access servitude, it's the access to the lot itself, but since the front lot has frontage on a public street, that's its access.
Right, so they would, but they would not use that servitude, they would, they would build their own?
Well, no, my interpretation is that they could use that servitude if it's just to come off of it as a drive, but not, not to create a lot where sole access is on that 20 feet.
But doesn't 20 feet only service one lot?
But still, technically, that front lot has frontage on a public road.
Right, so I think they would build their driveway off the public road, not use the servitude...
Maybe we need a legal interpretation of that from the parish.
Well, it's not really an issue, there's not a residence right now, anyway, so...
That's true.
When they build one, they'll figure that out.
Talk to Mr. O'Neill.
That's a good question.
Any other comments, questions? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to speak, public hearing is closed. Comments, questions by commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Julio Dumas, seconded by Sherri, or Paige. Paige Becknow. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Next item on the agenda, final approval for the following subdivisions, Jamestown
James Faughey representing Mr. Jim Rollins and Mr. Earls on the following subdivision plat. Comments were addressed and corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
Is this subdivision complete?
Yes, ma'am. I believe today it did get its final approval from what I was told.
But you have a lot of work out there to do yet.
As, uh...
The catch basins are not in, the grading is not there, you have a lot of equipment on the property, I mean, the only thing that is completed is your street.
Yeah, well, the drainage and this, the sewer lines, all that has been completed.
And how long you think that'll be before you finish?
As soon as it dries up, they can get out there and finish it up. I mean, much more than a day or two's work left. It's been raining a lot lately, so it shouldn't take them long to put the tops on those catch basins in.
Where are you going to be putting your streetlights and your fire hydrants?
Within the servitudes.
And how many will you be having?
Whatever's required by the parish.
What is required, Charles, by, from the parish? How many feet does the streetlight have to be apart, and how many feet the fire hydrant?
I can't answer about the street lighting, but if I recall correctly, the, no residence can be more than 300 feet from the nearest fire hydrant.
Yeah, it's 300 feet.
Charles, I had a question about these drainage servitudes. The one going down the middle of the block? Weren't we trying to get rid of some of those because they'd be so hard to maintain? And then going around the detention pond, I wondered about that, too.
The only thing I can say, Ms. Schlyman, is when the construction plans were approved for this, evidently, they felt that, I guess it was the RA with CSRS engineers at the time, and they felt that it was needed or required.
But how long ago was that?
Pardon?
How long ago? I mean, before CSRS, you know, we were starting to do away with some of those drainage servitudes.
That's true, but I think if the, if the construction... That's true, but I think if the, if the construction plans and all were approved prior to, certainly approved prior to their leaving us, then I think you'd have to go with what the construction plan showed and the way they were approved, and you would have to carry through on your final plan. I don't think you could change it.
At this point?
I'm not sure just what's included in those servitudes either.
Okay.
Have you, have you requested the final inspection?
Yes, it was requested, and I believe it was completed.
It was?
Today, it was completed.
Today?
Yeah.
How many comments do you have? Do you know?
The catch basins.
Any other comments, questions by commissioners? At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment? You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to comment, public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve, once the catch basins are in the punch list, is completed.
Second.
Motion to approve pending all the punch list items are addressed, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, final approval of Commerce Point Business Park.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Murray McCullough, Benchmark Group Engineer, 11328 Pinewood Avenue in Baton Rouge. Uh, this is a project that was, preliminary approval was last year around December. The construction's been completed, the final inspection is taking place, final approval has been given by the Department of Public Works, a maintenance bond submitted, as well as a maintenance agreement submitted to the planning commission staff. All comments on the plat have been addressed to the satisfaction of the staff, and we request approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions from commissioners?
You have the letter of no objection from adjacent property on Lot 17?
We do.
That's been delivered to staff?
It has.
Excuse me, Mr. Dumas, you've been given a copy.
On you.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? There you go. Hearing none at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward to comment? Please come forward, you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Any other comments, questions by the commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'm, um, to approve. Second.
Motion approved by Don Grant, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Michael Marshon, reject. Any other objections? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda, simple division of properties with variance. Colonial Sugar property tracks LJG-21, LJG-2A2, and LJG-2A3.
Good afternoon, I'm Carl Leader with Alvin Fairburn and Associates, 1289 Del Estee, Denne Springs, Louisiana. I'm here tonight representing Mr. LJ Grisaffy for the simple division, and we're here to answer any questions that bear eyes.
Commissioners have any questions, comments, this time?
You've just taken this tract, you're creating three lots, and you're asking for a waiver for servitude of passage in the interim, correct?
That's correct.
Just want to make it clear.
What are they going to be doing with the rest of the property, and when will that be, uh, decided upon?
Excuse me, one second.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, hello. The question was, what are...
Just make sure you speak into the mic, please.
The question is, what are our plans for the rest of the property?
Yes.
We have, um, we have what I call a preliminary preliminary. After talking with Charles, we, uh, we have a, um, a plat that we put together that shows basically what our plans are. We're going to be, as we go along. But, uh, we have a plat here, I think you have it in front of you, that shows the full intent of the, uh, of the whole property. And what, uh, what our plans are is to, is to, uh, once we, once we get, uh, the approval that we need, uh, from the parish, we're gonna, we're gonna start building the permanent road, which would be, uh, take us probably 30 days to build it, once we, uh, we get approval. We've already, uh, already done some work on dirtwork, whatever, whether it was that.
So, LJ, 30 days, so you'll have the road finished before they start construction? Is that...
No, no, once, because it's going to take us about two months to get all of the approvals from the parish.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit more, but what I'm saying, as soon as we get the approval, so that we can go ahead, as soon as, uh, the construction drawings are complete and approved, then it'll take us about 30 days. We only have 1,300 feet of road, and it's not much.
Do you think you'll be ready to start the next phase within 90 to 120 days?
No, ma'am, I don't think so. This, this phase will probably take us a year, maybe a year and a half, uh, to, uh, to complete. Now, we're, we're going to start probably, uh, within six months, um, making preparations for our, for additional road in this, in this phase. We're not going to wait, and, and next time you see me, we're going to be having all of this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Hearing none, like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? They have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed.
Uh, Mr. Grisaffy, your, your next step is to actually submit a preliminary subdivision plan for this project in the future, correct? And you'd anticipate to do that in the relatively near future?
We anticipate to do that. I have kind of a little timeline, I just didn't go through it there, but, oh, we're taking 60 and 90 days to have that become a four-year plan.
Any other comments, questions at this time? What is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Beverly Bari, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda, simple subdivision, I mean, excuse me, simple division of property, Lyon Copolymer in Geismar, properties tracks A and B, and lots 5A and 5B.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Middleton, I represent, uh, Alvin Fairburn and Associates and Lyon Copolymer, uh, in Geismar. These, uh, simple subdivisions are, they front on existing, uh, 100-foot and 50-foot wide private plant road servitudes that were established back in the mid-'60s when the Geismar, uh, complex was developed. Their line is looking to create these parcels to make a 99-year lease to Dynamic Fuels for the Synthetic Fuels Plant. I'm requesting a waiver of the public road frontage requirement.
Commissioners have any comments, questions? No comments, questions? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak, public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any comments or questions?
Well, considering what's, what's going on out there, and, uh... Since this is, this is strictly a lease, they are not selling the property, they will retain ownership, it's just a lease.
It's a lease.
I'll make the motion to approve.
My second.
Motion to approve, Michael Marshon, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda, public meeting on Duplessis property, lots EB2A1, EB2A2.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, asking for your approval, there weren't any comments, so, asking for your approval.
Ellen, we had to go around the world to find the parking lot for this guy. We, um... Yeah, because I guess he has to go around the other side, the other road, to get to park in the...
Two Row Road.
No, it's on Cannon Road.
That's where he parks?
How does he get his, how, where does he park?
You didn't see the little canopy?
Yeah, we saw that, that's, he parks there? Okay, see, we didn't know, we went around and we saw the other side, and the apartments, and there's a big parking lot back there.
So both residents park right there, off of Cannon?
Until they get the driveway in that servitude, yes.
Okay.
It's only big enough for one...
No, there's, there was two, it was a two-story canopy, okay.
Until they construct the driveway. It'll have its own driveway in that servitude of passage.
Does she own that parking lot behind there, on Two Row? Does she own all that property also?
Yes, mhm.
Could she not designate a parking space just for him, for his trailer?
Well...
Rather than making a driveway?
Well, I think they just want to drive, they, they want to drive in there and...
That's fine, it was just a thought.
She could, but they want it, because it's enclosed by a fence, so they want to, like, go in the gate and...
Okay.
She could, but...
Any other comments, questions by commissioners?
That's a little bitty lot. But it...
Well, no, it's all rental property around there.
Yes, yes.
All the little apartments.
It's serving its purpose.
All right, just, just a public meeting, so we don't have to have a public hearing. What is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Paige Becknow, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Public meeting on the William M. Brown properties, lot A2A1 through A2A4 and A2B1. Ms. Jackson.
Ellen Jackson again, with McLean and Associates. This is, um, two lots, and they're creating three additional lots. There was one comment, we have increased the size of the servitude, the T-turnaround is, uh, ample, and we're asking for your approval.
I guess my...
I'm sorry, give her a hand, I apologize.
I guess my, my question is, this is zoned, medium residential, so the potential for them to re-subdivide is huge. Creating a small subdivision, which it already is now.
Mhm, where there's no plan for further division, it's just, is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, but, doesn't mean it won't happen.
Well, I guess you could put stipulation on the plat, there's no further, what I'm saying, no further divisions.
Tell if I want to put a subdivision, I'll sold it, not give it away. If I wanted to put a subdivision, I'll sold it, not give it away.
No, can we put it on the plat, that no further division?
How do the servitudes connect? I mean, it looks like you got, they're offset.
Which one?
Coming on, if you got, coming up on Brown Road, and it connects to your, your lot access, it's, it's not lined up, that I can see, I mean, is there connectivity? What's, how does one connect to the other?
Well...
I mean, is it, I mean, you got a little piece that kind of extends out, is it just a big right turn there?
Yeah, it makes a turn, so these other lots have enough depth from that...
Well, right in here, this is in Brown Road, so the servitude starts right here, and then it turns, and then goes like that.
And I got one problem with the 50-foot. While you have 50-foot, when the rest of it ain't but 40, and it's only going to be, it ain't going to be no other development back there, other than a niece or nephew. But the Brown Road ain't but 30-foot wide, coming in there.
Well, but it's got a 40-foot right away.
Go a little farther up Brown Road, it's 30-foot.
Right, I don't have that...
In the middle of a pasture, we give them 50-foot, you know? And Brown Road, actually, where you turn in and go to Turtle Land, is only 30-foot.
The road itself?
The road itself.
Right, yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing that.
No servitude or no, no other, because Shakes and I wouldn't give no land to the right, and it's only 30-foot.
Okay.
Because I've been there all my life.
Got, I got you, thank you. Any other comments or questions? What is the wish of the commission?
I approve it with no stipulation, it'd be no further development of, uh, those properties.
That's a motion to approve, with the condition to no, no further development of the subject tract.
Right.
Unless the roads are brought up to parish standards.
My second.
Okay, motion to approve with conditions that no further development takes place unless the roads are improved to parish standards, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, item number nine, public hearing to consider amending subdivision ordinance, section 60.100A, to read as follows, the private access servitude The private access servitude shall be the following width. One to three lots being created and serviced 40 feet. One to five lots being created and serviced 50 feet. One to seven lots being created and serviced 60 feet.
Mr. Chairman, you've got to read the whole ordinance. It's not the, that's the change. I'll read the ordinance.
Thank you, since I don't have in front of me.
The following procedures shall be followed by, for the hardship subdivision of family property, each containing at least one-half of an acre. All provisions of the subdivision regulations shall be followed except the requirements under construction standards for concrete asphalt, hard surface roads and streets, 31.300, except the dead-end 40-foot wide servitudes of ingress and egress dedicated right-of-way may be allowed, whereas unlikely they will ever become through streets, as determined by the planning commission, except as a 20-foot driveway servitude may be allowed going from public road to a single residential structure situated on lot. The driveway may be, may not be used to service additional lots. When any subdivision of this park contains five or more lots, the minimum construction standards for private servitude access shall be within the 20-foot, within the private access servitude. The road shall be built at least 20 feet in width and road bed at least 24 feet in width, with adequate drainage ditches on both sides. The road shall be constructed prior to the first building permit being issued for any being serviced, for any lot being served by the private servitude of access. The private servitude, the private access servitude shall be the following width. One to three lots being created and serviced 40 feet. One through five lots being created and serviced 50 feet. One through seven lots being created and serviced 60 feet. In unusual exceptional circumstances where the required width, servitude of ingress and egress would allow, would not allow hardship subdivision of family property. The planning and zoning commission may grant a variance on the width of servitude of ingress and egress, and no event however, shall the width of said servitude be less than 30 feet.
Discussion. I will, yeah. I'm just, any comments, questions by commissioners?
If you don't remember, this came from the subdivision committee and it was just to address some problems that we saw coming up continuously on the road widths on private servitudes.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone wish, I'd like to open the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Billy Aguilar, RBB Construction, 15482 Allen Highway, Prairieville. I'd just like to ask a question. Is this meant to, for simple divisions of property, just like we were talking about earlier, that they can have to build streets now to access the second lot behind, like the guy that just did the 30-foot servitude? Is he now going to have to build a street to get to that second lot? Is that what this means? If that's what it does mean, I think this is an undue burden on people to have to build a street for a simple division of property.
Do you want to answer?
Yeah.
No, they don't have to build a street. They have, I mean, they don't have to build a asphalt road or a concrete road. Those standards are waived, that's what he read.
Okay, that's, that's saying that... Right, you're just going to make a dedicated 40-foot servitude instead of a 30-foot servitude, then a 15 or 16, depending on a lot, but they don't necessarily have to build a street.
Right, in case it's ever accepted by the parish, the parish will have the correct width to pave it.
Okay, the last, the last sentence you had in that, in that ordinance, you said that, I thought it said the roads had to be built prior to them issuing a permit.
The road bed.
Okay. You've got to have something to get to those lots, don't you? I've just, for simple discussion, I just wanted to ask that question.
Basically, all this is, is, a couple, three years ago, we went ahead and we saw issues with servitudes, so we made that correction. Here lately, we've been seeing some other problems where servitudes and family partitions have been arising, and all we're doing is making a correction for that.
You need to correct the problem with the 30-foot deal that we had a while ago, it would have to be 40-foot now.
Yeah, it's trying to, it's actually trying to do some planning.
Right, understand, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Murray McCullough with Benchmark Group, 11328 Peewood Avenue. Just a point of clarification, if I may. I think that, and I wasn't necessarily objecting to this, except that hearing the reasoning is if the parish ever has to come and pave a road in there, in which case, if it's a private servitude, the parish still has to buy it, because it would be expropriation without just compensation. In this case, I think it would be better served, if that's the reason, you'd be better served for having a 20-foot or 30-foot servitude of access and then requiring some setback from that in the eventuality that the parish would have to come purchase that right-of-way, because they do, by constitution, have to purchase that. This is something that was fought in Baton Rouge in court and was won in court. You know, dedicating roads to the parish for getting a plan approved. This is a private servitude of access. I think regardless of whether you give 30, if the parish comes, puts a 50-foot right-of-way or 150-foot right-of-way, they still have to purchase that amount of right-of-way, so it's still there for them. If you have a problem with that, it would be better handled as a setback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, I just want to bring up the fact that the only thing we are changing is we're adding the word "and serviced," because we had a situation where we had a street that had, say, three lots on it, and by adding more lots, let's say we only added two lots, that created a five-lot subdivision. Because the way it was worded, it only said we were creating two lots, so you only need a 40-foot servitude, when in actuality, there were now five or six lots, which means we wanted a 60-foot servitude. We were adding the language "and serviced" so that we can count all of the lots and then determine the width of that servitude. That's all we were doing, is adding the word "and serviced" to do that. And the other thing I want to add is, we talked about it in the committee, I think the language should be 1 to 3, 4 to 5, and 6 to 7. It shouldn't be 1 to 5. I mean...
I think that O'Neill didn't, we were...
When we, well, when we, when we went ahead and we were revising this thing several years ago, that was, there was a potential for a loophole there, and we were trying to keep that from coming up.
Just keep it 1, 2?
Yes, 1, 2, whatever. So it's, because it opened up for some potential argument. That's why that's like that.
My name's Dave Fazigus. I'm at 13025 Bluff Road in Geismar, Louisiana, and I now have a piece of property that has a 20-foot servitude of access on it, with an encumbrance of also 12 additional feet for a utility servitude. So, in my case, I would like to give a piece of the front of my property to my daughter, who's a teacher here in Ascension Parish. So in order to do that, would I have to, where would I get that additional property? My 20-foot servitude of passage is right up against the property line. So I want to know if this requirement is going to be for this additional servitude of passage and the additional 12-foot utility servitude? How is this going to affect the adjacent utility servitude? Because in actuality, you're going to be asking for a 40-foot servitude of passage and an additional 12-foot utility servitude, so you're going to be putting a 52-foot encumbrance on the property.
But again, we have not changed that. The only thing we're changing is the lots being created and serviced. That's all we're adding, is "and serviced."
So, so the 40 feet will include the servitude, the utility servitude as well?
No, no.
No, it doesn't today.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't, but today, it's 30 feet and 12 feet.
It still says you can go down to 30, you can request a variance down to 30 feet.
Okay, so it will not include the utility servitude? Okay. So whatever, whatever the servitude of passage is, then you could also come back and request the additional servitudes for drainage and utilities.
But it's a, you're seeking a variance. We can place whatever conditions we want for variance. It's not setting this as a rule, it's a variance. You want to, you want to go against the fact of the subdivision regulations, that's the idea. This is a variance. If you want to add a lot, technically, under our code, a subdivision of two, subdivision of a lot, unless you have enough frontage, is a subdivision to give you, build roads to the parish standard. This is a variance from that.
Okay, okay. I'm just, you know, and in my case, it's one thing, I'm just worried about the additional encumbrance you're going to be putting on private pieces of property. Thank you.
Any other comments? Public hearing is closed. And comments from the commissioners?
Staff, you said you're only adding the "and serviced," and earlier, we had a discussion about two lots, and commissioner brought up a very good comment about whether or not it could use that 20-foot access, and I'm reading it here. It says, "And except as 20-foot driveway servitude may be allowed going from a public road to a single residence or a structure situated on lot, the driveway may not be used to service additional lots."
I think the interpretation is correct. You can have one house accessed off of that 20-foot servitude. We don't have any access management issues in the parish. I don't see a problem if the guy on the front lot wants to access the same driveway, so now we only have one driveway accessing the public road. The code says that driveway is supposed to be separate and connecting to the public road that's out front, that's the way it has to be. Access management-wise, I don't know why we wouldn't want them to both access off that same private servitude and now only have one driveway on the road.
I guess I'm wondering if, if we shouldn't take the opportunity, we're amending this provision, take out the word "single" out of it, so that you can get to both lots? Because I agree with you, from a traffic management perspective, it's better to only have the one driveway, the one curb cut, I should say.
Well, and maybe you would have disputes between neighbors if they had to share a driveway, maybe it's better not to share driveways.
It's a 20-foot servitude of passage, it's not a driveway.
If they're both using it, it's a driveway.
It's servitude of passage.
Okay.
They have the legal right to use it.
Okay, well, this ordinance today is for adding "and serviced."
What is the wish of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion to approve and send the recommendation on to the parish council.
A second.
Motion approved by Michael Marshon, seconded by Paige Becknell. Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. We're considering the revision of the construction plan and submittal review checklist to include the following in order to address safety concerns. Do we have to read the whole thing, or just kind of just read?
No, this is just the checklist.
Yeah, this is not...
Yeah.
Just making sure.
And this, this actually came from Chris, where we talked about the safety shelf, and I did some reading on the internet, in a lot of places in the parts of the country, the safety shelf is only a foot and a half deep, but here in Louisiana, we would have problems with weeds. But I understand the committee talked about this in the last meeting, I missed the last meeting. Did y'all decide to pull it or anything?
The discussion was, in Louisiana, you're going to get a lot of rain and you're going to get a lot of sun, and that three-foot shelf is going to generate a lot of growth. And not only has it become a maintenance nightmare, it's going to become an eyesore, and it's going to become something that probably just isn't visually appealing. So, I think the recommendation that came out of the committee was, we should probably eliminate that item from the list.
Okay, on the other hand, it may be, it may be an eyesore, but on the other hand, you're not going to have someone go rolling down into a deep detention area. And some of these detention ponds are deep, and they, you know, they have to dig them deep to hold all the water that they have to hold.
I think that, once again, I'm not an engineer, but the term "litoral shelf" is something that you throw around a lot when you start talking about stormwater management and detention areas and things that are aesthetically pleasing. And a three-foot-deep, five-foot shelf around the perimeter, under the water of a pond, is something that's going to be difficult to maintain over any time span. And I agree that, yeah, I mean, a kid goes rolling down the hill, they're falling into a pond, that's going to not be very fun, but I think if you could design litoral shelves in areas where they may be accessed by people, something that's going to be 15 or 20 feet wide, and you're going to do some wetland plantings, and you're going to plant some stuff, and it's going to be something that looks like something, as opposed to something that grows into something you're not looking for. I mean, I just think that requiring a five-foot shelf, three-foot-deep, around the perimeter of a pond, that language may not be exactly what we're looking for.
Okay.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to ask the question, what exactly is it that we're trying to accomplish here? You know, catch the sliding kids, or...
Well, and you think about the person out there weed-eating, who might fall in. It is a safety shell. That was the intent.
Well, and, you know, I mean, personally, I'd like to have it there, but I'd like it to be a litoral shelf, so that it could be an environmental matter that could actually enhance the water quality of these ponds and serve multitude of other purposes, but that would take a bigger effort to design and analyze. I'd take it out, for now.
Any other comments?
Should we talk about the other one at the same time?
Yeah, please do, yeah, if you want.
The other item is the pond outfall structures. To include weir inlet and culvert structures, shall include metal grating or bars across the opening of the structure to provide for the safety of citizens. Generally speaking, when you drive around and look at some of these ponds that are out there, you could have a 36 or a 48-inch pipe that's half-submerged or completely open, or, to me, it looks inviting, it looks like something you may want to go in and explore, and I'm not sure that that's what we want the younger citizens of the parish to want to do easily. And so the thought is, some sort of grating or bars or protective structure to prevent that from happening is what we're looking for here.
Are we going to give them any standards?
I don't have the answer to that. I think that we probably should come up with some standards, and I think that one of the issues that may be brought up is maintenance. How do you maintain when garbage or debris gets pushed up against that?
Your homeowners association is going to do that, right? That, the pond or the detention area is there, under their maintenance and their control?
That's the hope.
So we're going to apply this to the general public, but not to ourselves?
I don't understand.
In other words, we tell Mr. Developer to do it, but Mr. Parish doesn't have to do it. Mr. Parish doesn't maintain, I mean, the homeowners association doesn't maintain those outlets if the parish builds them. I mean, again, I see the point, and it's important, you know, but if we don't have standards, you know, what are we really looking at? I'd rather see some standards. I mean, you know, they did this on 44, the state came in and put a bunch of little pieces of pipe and put this angular grates in front of every piece of pipe. Looking at that, it seemed to me like it'd be cheaper for them to have covered it, the whole thing, it would have looked better.
Right.
But, you know, I see the safety benefit of it, but, you know, the state has a standard. Are we going to apply the same, similar standard?
Well, let's start here. Let's start with what we can control, and then maybe we can move forward, and maybe something else can be done, but we've got to start somewhere.
I would think some of this could be, some of this could be discussed in the pre-construction meeting, too.
I guess I'm just saying, you know, you're imposing a requirement, yet you have no measurable standard for that, what that requirement is. And if you're going to tell me, "build this," I'd like to know what you expect, you know, before I agree to it. And that's all I'm looking for, is for a measurable standard. What is it? What is it that you're looking for? Put a couple of pieces of reinforcement stuck in front of the pipe to make it more difficult for a kid to get in the pipe? Or am I looking for something big?
Okay, we will, we'll bring this back to the committee, and we'll make a standard, and we'll present it again next month.
This is the public council?
Yeah.
Sorry, Alan, did you want to open it up?
Yeah, yeah. This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please state your name, you'll have three minutes.
Billy Aguilar, RBB Construction, 15482 Allen Highway, Prairieville. We have had numerous meetings with Mr. Compton, and we're seeing the new parish planning director, and a group of engineers, and when I say "we," I'm talking about me, and I'm a contractor, developer in Ascension Parish, and a group of engineers and testing lab personnel. We have all met with Mr. Compton a couple times, and the last meeting, we met with Mr. Compton, Mr. Becknell, Mr. Brock, Mr. Boujoua, Mr. Bro, and a representative from Fort and Tobata's new ERA. What I would ask you to do is, and some of the other things we discussed was the subdivision specifications that seemed to disappear about a year ago, and we've discussed bringing that back up and trying to get that back in place again. And what I would, I would like to ask you to do, instead of making this a policy, give us the opportunity, as a group of engineers and developers, to make them some recommendations on what needs to be done with pond shelves. You can do things like put a 3:1 slope on the pond bank down to a foot below the water, which means you're three foot out from the bank, you're going to be a foot deep, and from there, you go to a 2:1 slope where it's deeper. That way, if somebody falls off in the lake, they can crawl up that bank, because if you're six foot out there, you only could be two foot high, so you can crawl out of that bank. And that's one, one comment. If you put grates on all your inlets and catch places, you're going to have problems with drainage, with them getting stopped up with drainage. But if y'all will give us the opportunity... But if y'all will give us the opportunity, we will give them some recommendations. We're on continuing meetings with, with Mr. Compton, and if he'll agree to this, we'll bring you some recommendations, not to put as a policy, but put in the subdivision specifications itself to take care of these two problems.
Sure.
Yeah, I think Mr. Compton would be in agreement with that. And I'd just ask y'all, I, I would, I would say we probably can't have it done in the next sixty days, but in, in the next ninety days, we could probably have the whole subdivision specification maybe brought back to y'all, for y'all to look at and, and follow on to the parish council with this included in it.
I'd like to see something within five ninety days.
And, and does it take thirty days to get on the agenda for, uh? If we come back to the planning commission for a public notice for a public hearing, does it take thirty days before to get on the agenda? Thirty-five?
Well, O'Neil, if we just continue this until?
We could probably have it done in sixty days, but we might not make the agenda for the ninety, for the third month meeting, so it'd be something we'll be doing.
And, Mr. Aguilar, you're always welcome to come to the subdivision committees, if you want to come and talk to us, if there's anything you want to discuss or, you know, bring, you're welcome to come to our meetings.
Okay. I'll do it next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Any other comments, discussion from commissioners?
Uh, no, but I would like to pull this and, um, table it for further discussion.
You want to table it and reschedule it for the December hearing? That gives them the ninety days, and that way, we've already calendared it.
That would be fine.
Is that, I guess that's a form of a motion?
Do you need a motion for that? If I pull it?
I think we do.
Yeah, you want to, if you pull it, you pull it.
You can reset it, yeah, you need a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we rehear this in, in the December meeting.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion by Sherri Slime, and seconded by Paige Becknell, to rehear this item in the December Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item eleven, public hearing to consider amending the subdivision ordinance, section fifty point two oh two, to acquire a two-year maintenance bond instead of a one-year maintenance bond as presently required.
Just, I'm going to read how the ordinance moved.
Thank you.
It's fifty-two oh two, for a period of twelve months after acceptance of the work, the subdivision shall keep all filled trenches, pipes, manholes, structures, paving lights, et cetera, constructed by him in good condition, making repairs to such defects in materials and workmanship as may develop or discovered. The subdivision shall file with the commission a maintenance security bond furnished by companies listed by the U.S. Department of Treasury, circular five seventy, or cash bond, cashier's check, or certified checks payable to the parish of Ascension, securing to the government the satisfactory performance of this work for a period of two years from the date of such bond. The amount of bond shall be ten percent of the cost of improvements as approved by the designated engineering review agent. The form of the bond shall be approved by the local government parish attorney. The bond shall be subject to cancellation only upon written approval of the designated engineering review agencies.
Thank you. Any comment, questions by commissioners?
Again, this came out of our committee. Ricky, did you, um, do y'all have something you want to add? I was not at the last meeting, and I understand there was some discussion about this item.
Once again, this comes down to what Billy was talking about. This came from an earlier discussion from months ago. It came through the committee and is coming forward tonight, and I don't think it's the answer. I think the answer is coming up with subdivision construction specifications that we all can agree on, that will improve the quality of the construction standards of the roads. It's not necessarily the answer to just extend, um, maintenance of bad roads two years. It's build better roads so that at a year, we're fine and good and, and we're moving on. So, once again, I think the recommendation is to pull this item. Um, let's work on these subdivision construction standards, and if, when it's all said and done, um, if we need to relook at this issue, then we'll relook at it, but I think that this is not the answer today.
Should we just reschedule it and relook at it in December?
We have to open it for a public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up this item for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? State your name, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Uh, Billy Aguilar, again, the RBB Construction, one five four eight two Allen Highway, Prairieville. Uh, I agree with Richard, I was going to ask y'all to do the same thing, if you would. The, the problem with a two-year maintenance bond is your local small contractors and local small developers are probably incapable of getting it. You're going to, you're going to, what you're going to do is you're going to cut out all your local contractors, and you're going to have contract, to be honest with you, I can probably get a two-year maintenance bond. It's not easy, it's very difficult. Uh, here's a letter from surety bond brokers who writes all of my bonds and most of the bonds for the small contractors in this pack. Anyway, I'll read this letter to you, but, uh, basically, it says that the twelve months is normal time required for maintenance bond is also required by state law, that we maintain that, that we want the, the work that we do for a year. As you know, these bonds are not usually written, especially for small and medium-sized contractors. Any extension of time would be needed to be reviewed and considered by the appropriate surety company. In the past, we have seen maintenance periods required in business specifications with surety companies were unable to bond, requiring the architect to change the, uh, change the specifications to, to, to be able to, to do a maintenance bond, and, and I, I guess what I'm saying is if, if, what Richard said is, I think that the answer is not necessarily a longer bonding period, but better specifications for roads and everything, so you don't have problems. Like you said, you can't, just bonding a bad road is not going to make it good. And, and again, I would ask you to give us the opportunity to, to work this out with them and to give them some recommendations on this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Please come forward. No one else wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to postpone this until our December meeting also.
Motion by Sherri Slime to postpone until our December meeting, seconded by Paige Becknell. Oh, I'm sorry, Beverly Barre. Any opposition? Motion carries. Committee reports, subdivision ordinance committee?
I was not at the last meeting due to work. I'm going to let Paige give the report, but I would like to add, tentatively, our next meeting is August twenty-fifth, that's a Monday, at two. We may be changing that, but I will let you know.
All items, um, that were discussed, we brought some of them to the table tonight. There are other things that we are still discussing and will bring to, um, the commission at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Strategic planning? Any, any comments? New business, item thirteen. Any new business? Any old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Item fifteen, adjourned.
Yes, sir. If you're going to put something on the agenda that's either new business or old business, it has to be on the agenda. You just can't have new business or old business listed because it's not...
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I thought. I agree, okay. Item fifteen, adjourned.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Julio. We are adjourned for ten minutes.